All right, we will call to order the Regional Planning November seventeenth meeting. And we will begin with roll call.
Yes, Catherine Brown.
Present.
Mayor Boone Bogus.
Present.
Steve Summers.
Present.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Kyle Patterson.
Here.
Mayor Finan.
I'm also here.
And Katina Wulcher. Thank you.
All right, we have the agenda out there. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second, Summers.
Second, Summers. Smith, Summers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carries. Do we have any audience participation? Okay, saying aye, and we'll move on to the minutes. The minutes, draft minutes were presented from the October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting. Do we hear a motion to approve the draft minutes from October twenty-seventh?
So moved.
Finan, second. Wulcher?
Second.
Oh, just the last, yeah. All right, is there any discussion about the minutes? Anything? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Consolidated financial reports.
So the auditor's office typically runs the county reports on the tenth each month, with the tenth being Veterans Day, they won't run until Monday. So we're still working on the October reports as of right now. They'll be ready for the next commissioner's meeting. I did complete the RPC bank records, however, on Wednesday, and there was no unreported bank activity. Therefore, I'm pretty comfortable with where the fund balances are at, at the end of October as of right now, which stands at a healthy balance of twelve point one million. There are two funds that have a deficit balance, which is our Fund One Ten, WEOLA. Typically, it has a balance of about three hundred thousand dollar deficit. It is up closer to about five hundred thousand right now in deficit, and that's because due to the possible shutdown, government shutdowns, we were trying to process as many payments as possible related to, like, Parkland and any other sort of tuition reimbursements that would need to be done, so we could try to recoup as much of the money via the cash draw process when, you know, any possible shutdown takes place. We also had Iser, which had a deficit balance at the end of October of about one million dollars. We have collected about eight hundred thousand of that in November. The reason why the balance was so high was because for our first drawdown for Iser, we did it on a quarterly basis to make sure everything was working properly. Going forward, all of that will be done on monthly, we won't see nearly as high of a deficit in Iser going forward.
Go ahead, next, list of bills.
Nothing unusual there. Just a lot of activity as of right now going through related to Medicaid, but I guess nothing that popped out or felt need to be addressed. Yeah, if you have any questions, just let me know.
All right, so we'll first do a motion to accept and place and file the list of bills for October. Do we have a second?
Second.
Smith. Okay, any discussion on the bills? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposition, motion carries. Action items, approval of fiscal year twenty-four final budget and compensation adjustments. We have both Tammy and...
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for this opportunity to present the recommendation for the twenty twenty-four compensation plan and also one-time merits for the current fiscal year. The non-bargaining salary range adjustment for fiscal year twenty twenty-four is three percent, and the basis of this recommendation comes from market data collected by the AIM Employments Association. The association recommends that any employees who fall below the new minimum be adjusted to the new salary range minimum, and that employees be also moved to comparable positions within the adjusted salary ranges based on performance. And the cost of the movement to the minimum, the movement to the comparable range positions and merit to base is a total of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. For one-time merits for the current fiscal year, there were a total of one hundred and sixteen staff members recommended for one-time merit awards at a total of two hundred and three thousand, five hundred dollars. And so we're requesting permission for these recommendations for twenty twenty-four and one-time merits for twenty twenty-three.
Anything to add, Wulcher? All right, and we should note too, just for the record, the, these one-time merits and the compensation adjustments do include a three percent compensation adjustment for the CEO, and also a one-time merit of four thousand dollars for the CEO. So just want that out there. As part of that, do we have a motion to approve the fiscal twenty-four final budget compensation adjustments? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All right, any discussion on that? Any other comments or discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carries. I think that's item B. Approval, wait, yeah, approval of the fiscal twenty-four budget adjustment for Fund Twenty-One-O-nine indoor climate research and training.
So when I originally presented the budget to you guys, it was with the idea that we were going to receive approximately five million dollars worth of funding for, from the build infrastructure plan for Iser, related to their new facility and the renovation costs associated with it. And I believe, I don't have the memo in front of me here, but later on down the road from talking to DCEO, it was confirmed that they're actually going to present us with approximately nine million dollars related to the build infrastructure plan. And then in addition, we're also expecting to receive possibly two to three million dollars worth of supplemental funding to be able to apply towards the facility project as well. So I went back into the original budget, and I'm requesting basically an adjustment of seven million dollars to bring our building budget from five million to twelve million related to the new funding that we're being made aware of.
Okay, anything to add? All right. Do we have a motion to approve the fiscal twenty-four budget adjustment of Fund Twenty-One-O-nine?
Move approval, Summers.
Summers, second. Now, any discussion or further questions?
Can you remind me where this is going to be?
Right now, it's ideally going to be in the Champaign County area. I know any specific questions might be able to be addressed to Tammy or Paul on the call right now, because they've been working heavily in the RFP process for that.
We haven't identified a location yet. We're in the process of getting a broker, and then once that's done, we will be soliciting, there'll be an RFP that will be issued, soliciting input from, you know, with our own buildings that meet the specifications of what we're looking for. But as Orion points out, ideally, we're looking at this in Champaign County area.
It doesn't have to be new construction. It could be renovation.
No, it does not have to be new construction.
Have we completed that process? I think we talked about it last month with the, with the RFP, RFP process.
Yes.
Was that extended, or did we?
We, we did extend it. Tammy, I don't know if you want me to go ahead, or I can defer to you.
Yeah, I, I can speak to that. We did not receive any responses to the broker RFP, and so we have received permission from DCEO to go ahead and proceed with a separate search for a broker outside of the RFP process.
Any other questions on this matter? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion carries.
Chairman?
Yes.
Chairman, send some consolidating items, seven C, since we're all Head Start related, and let them speak to the vote.
Yeah, I would perfectly fine if no one objects to that, and then we'll just do one motion there.
Consolidate items, seven C, G.
Okay. Do we have a second to consolidate those items? All right, Patterson. All right, so we'll do that. I don't think we need a vote to consolidate.
Yes, you do.
Oh, we do. We need a vote to consolidate. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition to that? No? Okay, motion carries. All right, so now we're consolidating those items. So who's speaking?
Randy.
Oh, all right.
Hi, good morning. In your packet is the disability waiver. I am requesting your support and approval to submit a one-time disability waiver to the Office of Head Start for the program year seventeen, or September first, twenty twenty-two, to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. As of August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, when we submit a report to the Office of Head Start, the total percentage of children with disabilities for last year was seven point eight percent, which obviously did not meet the ten percent requirement for the enrollment of children with disabilities in our program. Despite the efforts to recruit and identify children with a diagnosed disability, there were several factors that contributed to the low numbers, such as low enrollment due to staffing vacancies, closure of classrooms, and also ineligible ability for support services. Programs that do not meet that ten percent must submit a request for a disability waiver, and if you remember, last year, we did, we did have to do that, and also in the previous year based on the COVID-19 pandemic. And we're still, we're still challenged with those facts of the pandemic. Do you have any questions?
Okay, and the second is the, second consolidation is the one-time federal share waiver.
I am requesting for support and approval to submit a one-time partial non-federal share waiver to the Office of Head Start for the grant year March one, twenty twenty-three, and ends February twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four. So we're still within that grant year. And this is only for the early Head Start expansion grants. The other Head Start and early Head Start grants are just fine, and we're on, you know, a quick path to, to meet the non-federal share requirement. The partial waiver request is for three hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars for the grant period. As of October thirty-first, that amount and the projections for additional earnings, it's, it's not probable for us to meet that requirement at this time. And that is also because we have staffing vacancies and several classroom closures for early Head Start expansion, for to be exact. These challenges led to fewer donations of goods and services, as well as time from parents and community partners. A letter, letter describing the non-federal share challenges was also attached for your review. Any questions?
Okay, item E.
So the next item on the agenda is the continuation grant applications. Now, this is, this is for the Head Start, early Head Start, and early Head Start expansion grants that we currently serve throughout our county. These continuation applications are for the grant year March one, twenty twenty-four, through February twenty-eight, twenty-five. So this will be the end of our project period for this five-year year grant. The policy council will review the applications on November twenty-seventh. By approving the funding request, you are approving submission for the level of funding, the number of funded enrollments requested, the program operations and schedules, and the required documents to support the applications. Those required documents include budget summaries, the program operations and schedules, the annual support, or the annual report that we completed this year, the community assessment update, as well as the continuous quality improvement plans, program goals and outcomes, and our self-assessment from this last year. The total amount for the three grants is eight million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Okay. G.
All right, the next item is a new grant. I'm requesting your approval to submit a new grant to expand RPC's Head Start and early Head Start services into Ford, Iroquois, and Vermillion Counties. The Office of Head Start announced a notice of funding opportunity in mid-October. Our presence within these counties will support children and families who desperately need prevention and support services. The five-year project period for this grant is expected to be from twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine, and will serve approximately three hundred and thirty-one children and their families. The program plans to maintain three of the seven centers that the program currently has within all three counties, offer full-day services, which they don't currently have, and add family childcare home partners and classroom collaborations with early childhood providers. Adjustments to the funded enrollment program, program operations, and budget amounts may need to be based on, or may need to be adjusted based on cost and the collaborations. Those are still in process, and we're still meeting with several providers in the three counties. By approving this funding request, you are approving submission to the level of projected funding, the number of funded enrollments, the program options and schedules, as well as the required documents to support the applications as proposed. The amounts, the total amount for the Head Start and early Head Start grant is five million, five hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Randy, can you speak to how this is a little bit different than some of the information you've just provided? So like, in the information, you previously stated, maybe there's staffing shortages and things that were on, for certain things. Can you just extrapolate a little bit based on how this is different and how staffing shortages won't make it...
So, yes, so we, we, we did our reduction. We did a reduction this last, last summer. We received approval from the Office of Head Start. We having, we were able to increase our wages for staff by almost thirty percent for every position in our program. And that has made a tremendous impact to the number of applications that we're receiving. We are pulling in more applicants from different parts of Champaign County, as well as outside of Champaign County. It is unfortunate, unfortunate that we missed the prime time hiring over the summer. Usually, that's between May and August. Since we did not receive those reductions, reduction approvals until July, we were not able to get it passed through the county board until September, and also our union. We also had a union contract that was in the process of being negotiated. So we missed that prime time, but we're, we're steadily picking up. I believe that we will be able to, you know, fulfill our vacancies. The numbers, I was just sharing with a colleague, that we, our numbers are steadily going down, at least our numbers for vacancies. So I'm very excited about that. Delissa and I consulted with, with someone that we know, who lives in the Danville area, who knows it very well. And he believes that our numbers, our amounts, our wage rates, to be exact, our wage rates will be very helpful to the people in the community.
If I may add, Mr. Chairman, so just to emphasize what Randy has shared with you, the delay in approving our change in scope or reduction was not on us, it was really on the federal government. And as a matter of fact, I have sent a letter, which I copied our county executive this week, to the Office of Head Start, essentially saying that they need to give us more time, because had, had our request been approved in a timely manner as opposed to taking eight months to approve, we would have been ahead of the, addressing this issue than, you know, where we are currently. Going to the, this new area, the gentleman that Brand is referring to was actually the CEO of the agency that used to run Head Start in Fort Vermillion and Iroquois County, which is East Central Illinois Community Action Agency. He's retired from there. The agency did lose the program, and in the interim basis, the program was being administered by a consulting firm that the federal government uses in these instances. And I think as a result of that, a lot of the services to the families and children in those three counties have been significantly diminished. And so we actually, for a number of years, had talked about whenever that was going to be open, that we would look into it to expand our services. To the other point regarding the pay, we've actually obtained the salaries of particularly the school district in Vermillion County. And when we compare what we're paying our staff right now with what are the staff, at least for that school district, that are being paid, we're very competitive. And we believe we're going to also be more competitive in the other two counties, Fort and Iroquois Counties. And so we're not as concerned about staffing in that area perhaps as we might be here. We're, you know, we're still competing with the school districts.
So just to summarize, the, the current efforts that are going on in Champaign County are being addressed in part by the reduction I'm geared to do and the increase in salary so that there's more competitiveness for staffing within the county. But the grant that you're asking for approval for would be more than enough to account for competitive staffing and expansion of service without diminishing the revenue in Champaign.
Correct, absolutely. And I've made sure that, that was something that I shared with Delissa, that I wanted to make sure that this was going to be a grant that we could sustain without hurting our current program. And that was most important to me, and he supported me on that. So once we looked through the budget and decided on what program options would be best appropriate for meeting the needs of the communities in those counties, we decided that it, that we should move forward and support those children and families.
One little known fact is that the agency in Danville actually used to operate the Head Start program here in Champaign County. And they voluntarily gave it up, and we took it on in nineteen ninety-four, I believe.
Nineteen ninety-four.
Yeah.
We had two centers at the time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, that was item F. I don't know if I, I think I might have messed up on that number. But okay, now that we've heard all that, we will, I will ask for approval of... Oh, it is the G.
You skipped out.
Oh.
You're good.
Okay. I was giving that one separate out now. I got really confused there, sorry. Okay, item G, approval of proposed twenty twenty-four RPC meeting calendar dates.
It stays the same, although in a couple day, you know, just one day's day off. So holiday, we did do a week ahead again because Christmas week, I think it's just, we'll have a meeting, so.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve items C, action item C, D, E, F, and G?
Second.
All right, so we have Walton, Wulcher. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Program updates, finance.
Yes, so as of right now, I'm sure, you know, some of you are aware too, Crowe handles, you know, review of the indirect rate right now within GADA. And so they're working on a new platform as of right now. And they reached out to me, and I'd been working with them to basically cement our old indirect rates, work with them on the program, and see what stuff we liked and didn't like about the new platform. So I've been busy with that. Also, I guess in, relate to the indirect rates as well, the SSRH reporting is coming on pretty well. Getting closer. It's taken a lot longer than I thought originally to build out the reports. One thing that I'm running into as of right now is our indirect fringe rates that we calculate and submit for the grants. Those aren't reported within MUNIS or the bookkeeping software for the county. And that's something we have to track off the program. So I'm, I'm working with the auditor's office right now. I'm building out a set of account strings that would basically run in the background to, to help us put that data into MUNIS. And then once that data's actually in MUNIS, then I'll be able, be able to help get it built into the reports that we're working on still. So that's been kind of fun projects, been working on them the last month or so.
Any questions on that? Okay, human resources, that was included in the packet. So we will move on to community services.
Good morning. Community services, most of our services are steadily progressing, no significant changes. I did want to report on some advancements. Our weatherization program, the last couple of years, we've been intentionally working on building our staff. And so we're happy that we now have three certified professionals. On Monday, we'll be able to begin scheduling appointments for households that are interested in applying for weatherization. I anticipate that we'll take about a hundred and eighty applications. It's been about two years since we've had an open application period due to staffing shortages, turnover, and training. So we're very happy to be on the right track with that program and see a bright future. Additionally, through a partnership with RPC, Ameren, and Future Energy Enterprises, we have been able to expand energy efficiency opportunities to Champaign County mobile home occupants. During this past calendar year, RPC's connected nearly a hundred and seventy mobile home occupants to the Mobile Home Initiative program. So there's a special opportunity for those that are mobile home occupants. We also have been working with the Housing Authority of Champaign County and the Urbana Home Consortium to work towards expanding affordable housing opportunities here in Champaign County, particularly formerly how, formerly homeless single household, house. So those are some specific efforts that we've been working on. And if there's any specific questions about community services that you have, I'm happy to answer those also.
Who's eligible for the weatherization grants this time of year?
Weatherization has a income eligibility, so they have to meet the two hundred percent federal poverty level. We do serve in Champaign County. So those are the primary.
And is that insulation, windows?
It's, they do an assessment and see what's needed in the home. Oftentimes, insulation, air sealing, energy efficiency appliance, oftentimes not windows.
Furnaces, sometimes water heaters.
So they can replace appliances?
Yes. If there's older, non-energy efficient appliances, that's often a measure that's installed in homes.
Okay.
And with the weatherized home, the average that a family could save could be anywhere between three and four hundred dollars a year, which is significant for a lot of the families that we serve.
All right, we have no community development director report today. Workforce development.
Can you put this over to Mr. Walton, please? I didn't have enough handouts. So there's a couple over there that were left blank. Good morning, everyone. Four quick updates. One, this year was the first year that the state awarded funds to local workforce areas from the General Revenue Fund. We worked through what projects we should focus on with the chief elected officials and the workforce board in our area. Like I said, last month, we were tentatively approved. Those projects are starting to get funded, so there's training projects in manufacturing, logistics, ag tech, and telecommunications that we're supporting, mostly with tuition reimbursements and supportive services. Another part of that project with the state allocation is a youth, rural youth career pathway project, where we're looking at Fort Iroquois, planning other counties. We're identifying those merging and leading industries, employers in those industries, open jobs in those employers, training that those employers require. And then we're developing a report to promote youth, or career pathways to youth in our rural counties. We're working with UVI Extension on that project. We think we're going to be able to use it for outreach in our workforce development area. area, but also to develop new youth career programs in our counties. Let's see, so that's good, that's moving along. The second thing, update that I wanted to give is with our youth, we've moved a portion of that in-house, and we're developing youth career programming. One component of that is paid work experiences for young people. And so we have young people that can work, and we're working to develop relationships with employers to have meaningful work experiences. So if you have employers that you feel could benefit from a program like this, feel free to reach out to me offline. Thirdly, this handout, the Workforce Innovation Board of Illinois put together a framework for building a local integrated business service team in a workforce area. And I've given you, I've talked about this a little bit in the past, but we're starting to develop that here, and we're doing strategic planning over the next six months. So an integrated business service team is anyone providing business services in government, education, or nonprofits coming together to be one team that will engage employers. And the framework in your handout is we work through shared values on page one, so being sector-based, being transformational, being reach-out, being coordinated. And we talk about what that looks like for us as a group. And then the second part of that is on the last page, where we talk about organizational structure, managing business intelligence, providing solution-based offerings, et cetera. You can look for that at your leisure. But the idea being that you're going through strategic planning, so on the other side of it, you can work together as one team. So there's RPC, there's Parkland, there's IDS, ES, IDHS, the Champaign Library and Chambers, et cetera. If you feel there's a government or nonprofit or educational entity that should be a part of this, go ahead and send them my way, and we'll incorporate them into this strategic planning process. Lastly, I'm working on our annual report. We do a annual report for the calendar here, and I hope to have that for our, our next meeting, so we're excited about that. Those are all the updates that I have. Thank you.
Just a question for you, Dr. Arnold. As you're going through this process, I know that the framework that the state passed is about six years old, so what is different that you would be adding or considering, given the changes in, you know, the social dynamics over the last six years?
That's a good question. I just went to a training in Austin, Texas about business retention visits. And business retention visits is basically what this is. You're going to a business, asking them where they're at in their business cycle, how they're doing with staffing and infrastructure operations, customers. And then you're asking specific questions around needs so that you can bring that conversational survey back to the team and make referrals. And the person teaching that was from Business First of Columbus, and they started their business team probably twenty years ago. And I don't think the framework has changed that much with the already nationally or over the past ten, twenty years, meaning the framework of getting together, talking to each other, have a plan together, have a referral system. Those are just kind of best practices that aren't going to change. But to your point, having a team that can assess the current economic climate and respond to it better, that's where we need to get to, which would more, I think, address your question. And we're not there yet as a team as far as having a collaborative approach. That makes sense.
Just as you go through this, might I suggest, you know, maybe talking with the Chamber, Economic Development Corporation, United Way. Those are service providers in those areas that do some of the work, and so instead of duplicating and having excessive redundancy, making the weekend stream line and be efficient.
Hundred percent. And we have the Champaign EDCs on our workforce board, and the Douglas County EDCs on our workforce board, and the Chamber is in the strategic planning meetings. And then the Iroquois EDC, I flew during the email. So to your point, I'm trying to make sure we engage the EDCs and the Chambers and get feedback from them. Because we don't want government and nonprofits and education stepping on the, tells we want to be collaborative. So I'm trying to use a process, but United Way I hadn't thought of, so I'll, I'll reach out to them too.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, data and technology.
I only have a couple of updates for the team since the last meeting. The RPC website redesign is finished. The new site has been published. There are many separate programs and systems that needed to be updated at the same time the site was published that we have been working on this week. That includes a data portal, a certificate, the site's search functions, we've worked with revised fix, scripts that pull images and resources from the site, domain and DNS updates through the county and the state, and making the old site available internally for staff that still need the content access. We have finished migrating all the remaining planning and community development pages and documents totaling over five hundred individual items and pages to the new site, including all the grant data that is required to be federally posted. We are working with staff on updating their workflows to match the new system and providing further training on specific areas such as jobs and bid postings. Before the end of the year, we will be updating the existing instructions on the staff wiki to reflect all of the recent changes we've made to our new website and the new processes we'll have. The sidewalk, curb, crosswalk, and pedestrian signal GIS data collection is accomplished, finished for the 2023 year for the ADA compliance analysis. We have collected over nineteen miles of sidewalks this year, a hundred and eighty curb ramps, several dozen crosswalks, and assorted pedestrian signals across Urbana, Champaign, Savoy, Rantoul, Mohamed, and the University of Illinois. We are preparing our analysis for this year's updated layers to present to the COATs, Policy and Technical Committees, in December of this year. Over the winter, we'll be updating our documentation for the sidewalk project to reflect all the recent changes we've made from going to an open source system versus the RGIS proprietary system that have not been updated so far. Lastly, the UKG project, the data technology team has successfully adjusted the job salary records in the county's MUNIS payroll system, allowing us to remove position control from those records and only maintain positions for the HR team in the UKG system, which cuts down on the time that we'll spend maintaining that data in multiple systems. The core HR module is live for the RPC staff. They have been trained on the basic UKG platform functionality. The HR recruitment module, we are currently building out and training the core HR staff on, on how that, that piece of the program will work. And once finished, we'll be building out the performance module. There will be three other add-on HR modules that will come one after another as the HR staff have time to implement. These include the learning module, the leave module, and the compensation module. The time and labor core module is continuing to be tested by the county and RPC payroll staff, working in multiple weekly meetings with UKG time and labor consultants. The staff training on the time and labor module will begin once we have a production-ready system, and we are planning for the time tracking system to be production-ready by December twentieth of this year. That's, that's the date that we've agreed on with the UKG staff. And those are my updates. Are there questions? No questions?
Not on that, unless anyone else had any questions, no. Did we miss item eight A grading?
Yes.
Mr. Hearn, would you mind if we went back and got the report on that? Financial statements for Head Start management.
It's right after the...
It was right after the consolidated items.
Did I have a... I didn't go...
It's not on his.
So, yes, there was a new one on my, my, in front of me? I should have gone with the new one. So, sorry. Thank you.
Sorry.
Because that, that, that part was thrown off a little bit too, so, okay, I do apologize for that. Let's just skip before we go to climate then, and we'll go to, say it again, eight?
Eight A, item eight A.
Item eight A.
It's for Head Start management.
Head Start manage...
I've heard a lot.
Financial.
Yeah, I don't see it on there either.
It's on mine.
Okay, it's on somebody's, it's not on my other one too.
It's not on the other one.
It's not on either one. So, I will take your word for eight. It's going to be there.
As Mayor said, it's been a terrible lot for me this morning. I wanted to share that our staffing vacancies are decreasing, as we talked earlier, and I do expect to be opening more classrooms soon, which will increase our enrollment. The centers had several open houses for families in the month of September for the families to visit the centers and also meet their new staff. Children also received developmental screenings, hearing and vision screenings, as well as nutrition assessments to begin their year. We've also had several community, community partners coming into the building, such as WLL, the Book Mentors Project, where they come in and they visit the children, and then they also read books. And the children get to take books home with them, so it's really a nice, a nice, nice service. Also, I wanted to highlight the progress children made between September twenty twenty-two through August twenty twenty-three. The child outcome reports from fall to summer showed consistent gains each quarter in all areas of development for early Head Start and Head Start, especially children transitioning to kindergarten, and some of those gains were more than twenty percent. So, very excited to report that to you today.
Okay, thank you. All right, now, sorry, thanks for being patient. Indoor Climate Research and Training Center, update.
We need an approval on the...
On more than, yeah.
Oh, we do need it.
You do.
But we already have a motion on all the others.
No, no, the other ones are not. Yeah, okay, so do we have a motion to...
Ultra.
Second, second Smith. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, A's, all motion carries. All right, we will move to indoor. I don't think we're going to turn the object. All right, go ahead.
Thank you, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here with you again for the second time. So, updates for us, we have completed a round of hiring. We have filled three critical positions, one of whom will be starting December fourth, that will be moving our program forward. We have a, a new office where we have an instructional designer, which will be able to really take our, help us take our program, our training program forward and meet the state's desire to see a lot of the training get to be online. And then we are, the person who's going to be starting in a few weeks is going to be on the research team to help to identify research projects, research branches to pursue, and how to run the research endeavor that ICRT has. We are still waiting for a couple of big grants that we had. We're still at the University of Illinois to get fully transferred over to RPC. Those are in process, so it's just, it's a matter of time. We also are continuing to pursue other opportunities. We've had a discussion yesterday with some opportunities with folks at the University of Illinois. There are, we were asked yesterday to consider leading a big proposal to DOE to improve our ability to, our collective industry-wide ability to work on attics and roofs in residential buildings. Those, as these and others in the weatherization team know, are often a major barrier to us being able to provide services to people. So, be able to research ways to do better jobs in homes where they've got problems with their roofs, for example. So, I see, as, as was mentioned before, we are working on towards the new space and have a substantial amount of funding coming from the state for that. And we are putting in a proposal to the US Department of Energy to provide an additional two million dollars towards building out that space as well to better support the statewide network. I believe that is all that I have for updates. If you have any questions for me, I am happy to answer.
Hearing none, we will move on to the CEO management report.
Okay. Good morning, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Sub a few items. The first is that this week, we were able to host Senator Paul Faraci at one of our LAHEEP facilities in Champaign. We wanted him to experience the whole LAHEEP intake process, and we feel that it was a pretty successful visit. He, not only did we provide data to him, one of the things we highlighted is that the Regional Planning Commission is one of the top agencies in the state in terms of providing services, and that is measured based on how many successful applications are actually approved. In twenty twenty-three, program year twenty twenty-three, our agency was not only, we were, we were able to spend not only the full allocation that we received from the state of Illinois, but we also received additional funding. So we spent a hundred and fifty-seven percent of LAHEEP funds in serving our community. And so we were able to share all of that with them, the way we manage our online scheduling with our clients, but also showcased the LAHEEP outreach mobile, which I think is probably the, well, I know it's the only one in the state of Illinois, but might be the only one in the country. And so he was highly engaged, asked a lot of questions, and certainly wants to work with us in making things much simpler with our utilities, particularly getting information from the utilities like Ameren especially on households that may be on, on the verge of getting disconnected, so we can do some early interventions with those households. The other thing I wanted to share with you, which many of you were present, is our visit to Springfield with Champaign County First. I thought that was very well organized by the Chamber of Commerce staff, and we were able to present a lot of the various infrastructure projects that are critical to our region. The other thing I wanted to flag is that yesterday, the Illinois Commerce Commission approved what are called utility discount rates. This is a provision that was included in the Climate Equity Jobs Act, and the utilities have now presented their cases before the Illinois Commerce Commission. Essentially, what this would do is if, once it's implemented, low-income households will get a, will get discounted rates. The commission has given the utilities up to August of twenty twenty-four for this to be, to be implemented. The reason I flagged it is that this could be a challenge, particularly for our state supplemental LAHEEP program, which is funding we get from the regulated utilities by them associating, assessing a surcharge on their, on their customers. We're not quite sure if the utilities would want to do both, having a, a low-income assistance program as well as low-income utility discount rates. And so we are going to be in discussions with the utilities, as well as with our legislators, to figure out what would be the best way to actually benefit and serve low-income households who currently are challenged in affording the utilities, because utilities are pretty high. So I will be providing more updates to you as we, as these conversations progress before we get to August of twenty twenty-four. The other thing I wanted to say, I think this might be our last meeting.
I want to say, action nine, which is...
Yeah. Typically, we don't meet in December unless there's something pressing, but if, if we do, that would be great. If not, just wanted to take this opportunity to first thank you, Mr. Chairman, as well as the, the rest of the commissioners, for really sticking with us. This year has been a very tough year for the, for the Regional Planning Commission in terms of losing key staff. We had essentially sixty-five years of experience leave pretty much at once. And, and on top of that, transitioning in a major program from the university. And, you know, staff, I think, were, were able to hold strong in, in ensuring that what they needed to do was, was getting done. But I wanted to thank the commissioners and then also thank the staff for all the hard work that's been done this year, given that it has been a pretty, pretty tough year for, for us as an organization. And with that, I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Okay. Any old business from any commissioners? Okay, under new business, we, unless somebody objects, we will not be having a closed session. There is no business in the closed session today. So with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All right, all in favor, say aye. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries, adjourn.